Welcome, everyone, to the zoning board of adjustment meeting for July 19. I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:01. Would you all please stand and should you choose to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you all.
I'll begin with the roll call. Attendance of ZBA members. Hardikoff present.
Cheryl Huckins here.
Alexandra Samaco present.
And Paul Thibodeau present.
And Hardikoff present. First up on our agenda is a continued case from June 21st. It is case 1116-GR-23, a variance for owners P&amp;P Real Estate Management. Request by applicant for a variance from Article 4, Section 4.1.1, Table 2, to allow side setbacks of 12.16 feet and 11.49 feet where 30 feet is required and a front setback of 35.76 feet where 40 feet is required on Flower Drive, map 111, Lot 6, in the general residential zoning district. Could I have the representatives from P&amp;P Real Estate Management come to the front table?
Just to know, Madam Chairman, the Land Use Office did not receive any notification that they would not be here or that they wanted to continue or anything of that nature?
It is 7:04 and for the second and last time, I'll call forward case 111-6-GR-23, VAR, Owners P&amp;P Real Estate Management or their representative.
Just for the clarity, I did get a call from the realtor like the week before last and they thought they could build a house there that would fit that. And I told her that the owner would have to call to cancel if they were going to cancel this and we never heard another word from them. So I'm not sure if they're planning on not going forward with this or not. They didn't say straight up, but the realtor did tell me they thought they could make it work, but the realtor's not the owner.
Where does this stand? This is currently in front of us to be heard with nobody to represent it.
Yeah, so I think because they couldn't make the last one, this board could say that you're gonna close it with non-prejudice. So that way, if they ever wanted to come forward with another application, they could because you didn't judge the application.
I will make a motion to close this case with non-prejudice. I will state that they should have to refile with all fees should they choose to bring something forward again regarding this lot to the ZBA. Does the rest of the board agree with that?
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote beginning with.
Samaco, aye. Huckins, aye.
Thibodeau, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. So be it. For those of you that were here for that case, please feel free to take the time to exit Anyone participating online, if you can just hold tight for just a moment, we are waiting for the hallway to clear, so voices don't carry. Next up is case 112-09-GR/HC0-23, variance for owners Jason and Angela Dyer. A request by the applicant for variance from Article 4, Section 4.1.1, Table 2, to allow a residential home to be constructed with a front setback being 15 feet where 40 is required and a back setback of 16 and a side setback of 23 where 30 is required on Franklin Pierce Route 9 and Washington Street on a 23-acre lot in the general residential area and highway commercial overlay zoning district.
It's .23 acres.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
23 acres.
Oh, I'm sorry. .23 acres. My apologies for that. Looks like Representative Bruce Bohpek, please come forward. Before we begin the case, you have four seated members of this ZBA. There are three that would be voted for or against the variance. Are you willing to accept four members or would you like to continue to a later date? Please note for the file that four members is fine according to the applicant for this We're learning how to use our technology. So if you could present the case, be sure that you've covered the five areas of the criteria to file the case, please.
Hey, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chairman, my name is Bruce Bohpek and with me tonight is Jason Dyer and he's the property owner and I am the representative of the survey work and the site work, site development work for the project. You have before you a set of plans that you can look over. It's called the ZBA plans for this property. You've pretty much read what I had prepared to speak to you about and basically what on the forefront of this is this new layout is located on the, the new layout of this property, the structures, is located on the optimum location of this pre-existing non-conforming lot of record. It is our intentions to improve the visual appeal, the value of the property of this pre-existing non-conforming lot. Let's see. The next thing, I guess we'll go with the four, would you like to go with the points next or?
Justification points.
Justification, okay. Yeah, I will, I will, John. Okay. Number one, special conditions exist such that the literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant as defined under the applicable law. Well, the existing vacant non-conforming lot of record of 4.04 acres cannot comply with the present zoning requirements. That's what I had written. I guess I could expand on that, but the lot was developed or established many, many years ago before zoning. It's been for sale for a period of time. Nobody has bought it or considered, well, I guess nobody had bought it for development, but that's not true. Back in 2006, Ted Veale had bought that property and came to the ZBA and I represented him at that meeting and he got approval for a structure, septic system and well on that property. Okay, so.
Fire it.
Yeah.
Yeah, when the ZBA thing changed, where they were good for two years, the only way you could make the old ones be only good for two more years was the town had to hold the hearing to make that happen and the town didn't. So all the ones that were approved before that are vested for life. It runs with the land just like they used to. With that said, though, the house that was getting a ZBA variance on before was an octagon house that was in the middle. It was almost like the one that was up on Scruton Pond Road. He'd be on that one too. So it's, unless you're gonna build an octagon house, that variance is no good anymore.
Okay. I do have a schematic of that if anybody likes to look at it. I do have a schematic of that.
When we get to questions, we're gonna have you finish the justification. When we get to questions, it's gonna be important for you to tell us what the approved setbacks were at that time. But for right now, let's have you finish the justification.
Okay. Number two, granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. The residential development of this lot would approve the property, the property's visual look, consistent with the neighborhood and increase the town's tax base with the new structure. Number three, granting the variance will not result in a diminution of the surrounding property values. Pro's new house would increase the value of the neighborhood inconsistent with the, inconsistent with the residential use. Number four, granting the variance would be substantial justice. Residential development of this property would enhance the value of the lot and increase the town's tax base. Five, granting the variance would not be contrary to public, public, public interest. Granting the variance would be a financial increase of the town, the town, consistent with the neighborhood. That's what I have.
Can you, can you share with us the prior approved zoning board variance, what the setbacks were that were approved in 2006?
2006 setbacks were 40 front, 30 side back.
They approved a variance of?
On a 24-foot front, 15.3-foot back and the other two sides met as, as does our current plan before you. Current plan before you is, try a little, just to go over those specifics. Current plan before you, we're asking for a 15-foot setback from the front sideline and a 16-foot setback from the side, from the rear sideline, I mean rear line. The other two sides meet the requirements for the 30-foot.
How do the other two sides meet the requirement? You have 23 feet from the wetland.
Yeah.
And you need, and you need 75, right?
No, 50.
50?
50 from a jurisdictional wetland. It's 75 if it's a prime wetland, but this was just a jurisdictional, so it's a 50-foot.
So they actually need 50 feet from.
Right.
50 foot from the wetland.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about property.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
In the application?
Your variance includes a waiver for that wetland setback.
Yes, correct.
And that was grandfathered when this lot was, was originally created, but that went away at the town meeting vote a couple of years ago, right?
Right, well, I guess it did go away.
Yeah, well, the, the wetland buffers came back, that lot was exempt from wetland buffers because it was created before 1988 when that buffer thing went in. And then it was, it was exempt, it was also exempt when the last variance came through before too, but it's not exempt now because of that zoning change from two years ago.
Right.
And that's the 9.4 on the.
Definitely.
Wow, they can ask for relief here, just like Dan Ayers did.
Yes.
Excuse me? No, the DES only has to approve it if you disturb the wetlands. DES doesn't have any buffer requirements and DES did approve the septic design because of the distance, he was able to keep it away from the wetlands by going to the other side.
Any other historic information that needs to be shared from the Land Use Office?
Not from our office, Don already covered it. Other questions?
Yeah, can you turn your microphone on?
And the current landowner of Lot 10, now are they aware of this? I mean, is this, is their deed gonna change and their, their?
No, no, no ma'am. Their property is where it is and the, this .2 acres or .23 acres was, was taken off the, on the tax maps we have today, was taken from the old tax maps that were first developed. And I have a copy of the original tax map.
And there wasn't an old survey?
Those maps were just scaled and approximated at that point. From, from actual boundary survey, it's 0.4 acres.
So there wasn't a previous survey on this?
No.
Okay, all right. That was just my question.
Any other questions for the presenters of the case before I open public comment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, looking here at the plans that you've provided, is it possible to construct a dwelling on this non-conforming property and to abide by the setback requirements?
Let me, let me just say that the design, this layout, this layout is for a 28 by 36 footprint of the house and a 14 by 16, a 14 by 28 footprint of a garage. And that equates to.
Is that, is that correct, 28 by 36 or is it 28 by 26?
26, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I think it was about 1,450 square feet approximately, correct?
Yes.
What footprint is?
Yeah, 1,468 square foot of footprint.
Does it have a full foundation under it? Walkout basement? You don't have any topos here, so you know, I can't make heads or tails of.
Oh, I apologize. You have a topo here if you'd like.
I'd like to see it, if you don't mind, thank you.
Sorry about that, I got you. It's getting better every day.
Vitamin C.
Or get a new one.
I totally got a new one. We, we kind of redid it again.
Let the young guy come get it.
Well, no.
Any other questions before I open public comment? If there's anyone here that would like to speak for or against this case, please come up to the podium, state your name and your address, please, and then proceed with your testimony. Nobody online?
Adam and Chairwoman, there's nobody online.
Okay, so at this time, I will close public comment for this case. And if there happens to be a ZBA member that would like to make a motion, please feel
Can we just make it clear that, because I didn't see it on the application and I don't have the package in front of me, did he also ask for the waiver for the 9.4, the 50-foot to the wetland? Was that included in this? I didn't think.
I didn't see it, that's why I asked about it.
Yeah, that's why, but I guess if that's what he's asking for too, I mean, that's, I don't know, I don't know if you want to address it here, you want to send it to the planning board. You did Dan Ayers at his ZBA thing, but the regulation says the planning board does it as a 9.6. So, but he didn't specifically ask it here, then you would be sending them to the planning board next to address the wetland buffer. I just wanna make sure that it's clear tonight what that decision is.
That would be the only reason to be going on the planning board is for 9.6.
Correct.
Yeah, good.
Understood.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the variance for case number 112-09-VR/HC0.
I'm sorry, Mr. Thibodeau, GR.
GR?
Yep.
Thank you. Slash HCO slash 23 slash VAR, variance. I want to make a motion to approve it based on the size of the lot, that it's too small to do anything else with. You're putting pretty modest foundation on there and the one-car garage being on a slab with a 50-foot setback. So I'm going to include that we, we add the waiver for the wetland setback, 9.4 from the wetland for the garage as well while we're at it. What else did you want me to write and include in here? Special conditions exist such that literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant as defined under application law because state facts that support this conclusion and granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, not contrary to the public interest because of state facts that support this conclusion. I was supposed to write state.
No, because of the stated facts.
Yeah, because of the stated facts from the applicant provided to the board.
Thank you.
I'm reading verbatim here. Number four, and granting the variance will result, not result in diminution of surrounding property values because, state facts, because the surrounding properties match what he's trying to build there and it would complement the neighborhood. And granting of the variance would do substantial justice because of the lot is too small and it's grandfathered. And I actually, I think they did a great job laying this out.
Just to make it clear, I said 9.4. I want to correct it, it's 9.5, is that the 50-foot in it?
Would you like to amend that motion, Mr. Thibodeau?
I'll amend it to, to grant a waiver for 9.5, 9.5 in our regulations.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. Based on the first and the second, on this motion, roll call vote, please. I'll begin with myself. Hardikoff, aye.
Thibodeau, aye.
Huckins, aye. And I'd like to just ask, you probably did, but make sure that the town gets a copy of your new survey so they can amend their maps as well, because I used to do the maps. I know how, I know everything involved in that.
Well, I supplied, I supplied the town with a copy of the ZBA stamped with survey and wetland scientist as I am, so.
They'll send it to the mappers. Samaco, aye.
Thank you. There you have it.
Hey, there you are. Thank you.
Just to address the board to answer Cheryl's question, like the applicant stated, we did receive the survey and it'll be sent to the appraisers as well as the mapping, the CAI mapping people.
Good luck.
Congrats.
Very good.
I don't even care anymore.
Diminution. Diminution.
Diminution. I've actually phonically spelled it because it's such a difficult word. Diminution.
Teach him, Bruce.
Bruce, you did a great job with that.
Yeah.
He can say it.
Yeah, diminution.
Good job.
You need to change that word to something.
Something English, reduction.
That's probably a good thing to bring up. We can talk about later. We're gonna be redoing our applications, so.
Yeah, we'll work on that after. Next up, please, thank you all. Next up is case 263-10, Lot 105-RC-VAR, owner Lee Oak Cooperative Incorporated. Request by the applicant for variance from Article 4, Section 4.2.3, to allow for an additional lot inside the mobile home park, Lot 105, on Ambleside Drive, map 263, Lot 105, in the regional commercial zoning district. Before we begin, could I have your name, please, sir?
My name is Richard Nagro.
Okay. And are you willing to have your case heard by four seated ZBA members versus five, of which three would need to approve or deny as a majority?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm so glad I didn't go first.
So you'll present your case, read the justification, please, for it, and then we're going to ask Land Use, has there been any background information or historical information that the board needs to know about? And then we'll open up public comment. Please proceed.
Yes. Point number one, special conditions exist such that literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant as defined under applicable law. To deny the variance will leave Lot 105 vacant and prevent any future development of the lot. Number two, granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. We are a legally existing park. The addition of one home on a site ready to go is consistent with the already existing homes within that park. Point number three, granting the variance will not result in diminution of surrounding property values. Developing Lot 105 will actually have a positive impact on the values. Number four, granting of the variance would be, would do substantial justice. Lot number 105 is ready to go. Granting the variance will allow us to complete the work started by the previous owner. Point number five, granting of the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. It would allow for a low to moderate income family to realize homeownership. Hope that answers your question. Hope that answers your question.
Well, that starts us, yes. Could you, what's your role with the, with the Lee Oak Cooperative?
I'm a past president of the board.
Past president?
Yes. And the board asked me to start the ball rolling with the approval of Lot 105 and I volunteered to do the service to them and I have provided a letter of authorization for that.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from the board before we open public comment?
What is the water supply project going on?
The water supply project, we are, we have built a new well and we are connecting the wells to each individual unit with curb stops and we are combining the existing well with the proposed well. The project is, the well is online, up and running, and now we have to finish the connections to the individual units. So we're looking about perhaps another year to complete that, which would be laying out the new main lines and the connections with curb stops.
I think the town supported that, Mr. Thibodeau, and Community Development Finance Authority helped to.
Yeah, we had the, yeah, I was involved in that aspect of it. We put the loans for the project plus the grants.
Yep.
That we pursued. And I must say, the town was very integral in that. We couldn't have done it actually without you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I have one. When, when this mobile home park initially went in, what was the agreement with the town? Did they limit the number you could put in there? Was there, is there anything preventing you from putting another lot on there?
Well, the, I don't know.
I can't answer it from a point of view from the town if that's where you're trying to get the answer from.
We didn't, I'm sorry, please.
So, right now, because of the, this was done pre-zoning, pre-planning board or anything else, and it was legally existing mobile home park. And right now, by our zoning, the density there is higher than what would be allowed today and that's the reason why they're here. And I had a conversation with the town's attorney and lots that were developed and used are legally existing because they were there before zoning. This lot, because there was never a home put on it, even though it was set up to be a lot, doesn't get that grandfathering because it wasn't used as the dwelling thing, even though the lot was set up to be dwelt on. And the rest of the park is still like an old gravel pit still open that's not developed.
That's why you had to come here, because that hadn't been developed yet. Okay, I get it.
Well, the lot, the lot was kind of set up and that's why you doesn't have to do a lot to set it up. The lot was kind of set up, but it didn't get vested with the use.
All right.
Is this the only lot in the park that has been set up and was previously considered for this?
I don't think there was any previous consideration.
Okay.
I think this is all.
There was an old plan that was submitted to the state because the state had to approve this before the planning board did and that showed probably another 20 or 30 lots that were in that gravel pit area that never got built, but because they weren't set up as lots, then they would have to do all the, what do you call it? They'd have to do all the infrastructure to make the rest of it set up, where the infrastructure for this lot already existed.
Okay, so the infrastructure for the lot is there?
Yes. Do you have this?
Mm-hmm. In reference to the water that had been questioned earlier, was this lot included in that application or will you need to expand that in order to provide water to this lot?
The, the utilities all reach to this lot and beyond and that was part and parcel of why we're pursuing Lot 105. The electricity's there, the septic is there, the water is there, we just have to make the connections. And it was our belief that the previous owner planned to do that, but then they decided to sell because everything was there.
Understood, okay.
This, this was, this is what we've been working from. This is from the state. This was what the Roberts family. this was what the Roberts family originally had approved, and it would have been something that we could have worked from, but they did not record this, and so now we have to work from the modern or updated requirements. So it leads to why I'm here today. And in uh, the evaluation of all these lots that are, have potential, we really don't have the funds, nor the ability to gather those funds in order to be able to develop anything but Lot one-oh-five.
Okay, any other questions from the board before we open public comment?
I do, on, on that plan that you're referencing.
Yes.
You have lots that are circled, and you circled, uh,
Yeah, ones in.
It's shut off, what does that mean?
Uh, the ones that are circled in blue and red?
Well, I have a black and white print.
Um, excuse me, yeah, um, let me give you this.
I, I think we're looking at the same thing.
Yes, yes, we are, okay. The circles where, that was used for, um, these were failed septics that were replaced. And so was just, um, this was something that we were referencing when we were dealing with the septic issues. It's not an issue that we're dealing with anymore, it's all done, they're taken care of. The um, so the ones that are circled, they were different colors, red was they were failed, blue was they were failing. And what we did was, we actually had, um, we had used some of the, the loan that we had to switch over to take care of the septics, and so uh, they're done, they're taken care of, and they're all good to go. In terms of um, anything else, you can see that within the road, you're going to see a dark black line, that's the water.
It's all black, but anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, well, um, it's the one that's in the middle of the road.
Okay.
Road, yeah.
Yeah, so th- that shows where the water connections would be.
So each, each site has individual septics?
No, if you were to take a look at, they share septics, all of them. And if you were to take a look at um, any one of them, uh, you'll see that there'll be, it looks like, uh, you draw a bed, it's like one, one connected to the other. Goes like, like that, that shows where the septics connect, who is connected to who. So, every one of them shares a septic, and this Lot one-oh-five will be the same. It will share its septic with sixteen Ambleside.
All right, so ju- I I'm confused on the septic thing, so, two units here, one leach field, is that it?
We do, yes.
Two units here, one leach field, each have their own septic tank, so when you say this site is ready with a septic, you're saying that there is a septic tank on this site connected to a leach field?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody's sharing the water, so the, the water supply is way away from all these leach fields. Coming from the wellhouse in the corner here, as I see it, right?
Yes, if you were to take a look on the far left, you'll see where it says Lot one-sixty-eight, then go down to Lot one-seventy-two, right next to that, it says UD undeveloped, that's where the new well is.
I see. I don't have any more questions.
At this time, I'll open public comment. You can come to the podium, please, and state your name and your address.
Brian Whedon, sixty-three Winkin Pond Road.
Proceed.
So I live right next to your trail park, kind of, uh, so that where the pump house is, the water supply was like, you couldn't touch the water supply before, so with new well, is that available to us again?
Got a question for, is the new, and where's your address?
Sixty-three Winkin Pond Road, so right where the Bellme empty's out, so the Ambleside Trail Park, that river runs down the side of one-twenty-five
Mm-hmm.
and empties out in the Bellme, and we could never fish there, because somebody posted the, the well, you know, there's a community water supply for the Ambleside Trail Park, but new one now. So, my question to you is, since you put a new well, is that a water source available to us again?
Uh, I don't know, I don't think so, I don't, I'm, I do not, I'm not aware of our water supply being made available to anybody that was not living within the park.
So I think what um, Mr. Whedon is asking will only be able to be answered by Department of Environmental Services that approved the new well. So, the, at the state level, you could certainly call and ask that question.
Okay, I'll ask him.
I think that's the best course of action for that.
It wa- was that your question, though, sir, is, is, you, you were looking to get some of this potable water to your property?
No, I used to fish there when I was a kid, but they.
Used to go fishing in the river?
Yes.
Went to go fishing in the river?
Yeah.
Why couldn't you fish in the river before?
Well.
Can't use the natural resource, because it was supplying water to the Mobile Home Park.
They posted it because it was a water supply for the Mobile Home Park.
Excellent.
Was the river?
Yeah, the Beaver Dam River, whatever, runs along one-twenty-five, holds a bunch of native trout. And then they posted it, and they don't, don't allow us to fish here anymore.
So that property he's talking about is on your parcel?
It's right down, as you make the corner, before the trail park's up on the hill, and right down below that is their pump house for the trail park, who was never posted before, but now it is. You know, last five, ten years.
It was posted by the state.
Uh, I think to trail park, whatever.
I think we'll have to, you'll have to check with Department of Environmental Services, since they made the change.
While that, and also if private lands posted, the owner has a right to post the land, so if the owner says, it probably, it might have nothing to do with the water supply, if they don't, they're afraid of liability with people going on their property and using their property, and they post no trespassing, then they still have a right to keep it that way because of their liability issues.
It's more danger of guy going on the, the road, and that's public estate or brand and property or thing.
Good point, okay, thank you, sir, any other questions?
No, that's all I got, sorry.
Anyone online?
Thanks for the fishing tip.
Yeah.
Madam Chairwoman, I do not see anybody online for or against the application.
Any other questions, comments, or concern from ZBA members? At this time, I would make a motion. Go ahead.
Just close public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I did, at this time, I'll close public comment and make a motion in reference to case two-six-three-dash-ten, Lot one-oh-five-dash-RC variance for Lee Oak Cooperative. And the motion is to approve this variance because special conditions exist that literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant, Lee Oak Cooperative, as defined under applicable law, since they have a ready-to-go um, lot with water and sewer and utilities, and would like to be able to utilize it. And that granting the variance will be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance and not contrary to public interest. And that granting the variance will not result in
Diminution.
Diminution of surrounding property values. In fact, having new properties within the park will continue to boost the values of the surrounding properties. And that granting the variance would do substantial justice for the owners and for the public at large, allowing for an additional entry-level home for a moderate to low-income family unit.
Second that motion?
Roll call vote, Hardikoff, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
Thibodeau, aye.
Simak, oh, aye.
There you have it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time.
Help this guy go fishing out there, would you?
Yeah.
Is there anything you can do?
Yes.
I love it.
Yeah.
You know, if you hit the eyes and glass, you know where one-twenty-five is, where the bridge goes over it? There's fish in there.
Okay, I'm going to rein us back in for review and approval of meeting minutes. I have a series of corrections to the meeting minutes. And I've highlighted them. Yes? Um, I'm going to actually pass off the highlighted corrections, but line sixty-three, um, the word regularly should be state, I think, regulation, either following state regulation on or in reference to the history. Um, line ninety-three. I think that the word others, um, the town has never going to have anything to do with, and I think there's a word missing there, um, to do with this, to do with something other than when something comes out. There's something missing in that line that needs to be corrected.
Before that, it says, we live on a private way that the town has never going, I think it should be the town is never going to have anything to do with.
Yeah.
Other than.
Other than, okay, so it's not the word others, other than. Um, line one-seventy-one. Hat is supposed to be the word that. Line one-ninety-seven. Well, I mean, I would, I'd like our meeting minutes to look professional, so, that's okay. Okay, line one-ninety-seven stated, this is a great idea, and my family would have approved of it, not proved. Line two-oh-five, um, instead of Bo, it should read bought, there's just a T missing. Line two-forty-five, the word that, that is listed twice. Does anyone else have any corrections to the meeting minutes?
Oh, Madam Chair.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve them with modifications?
I move, we approve the minutes as modified on the record.
Second?
Roll call vote, Hardikoff, aye.
Thibodeau, aye.
Simak, oh, aye.
Thank you all, any other business that should come before the board? Stated they have to do a new one and pay a new one, pay all the new fees. Anything from the Land Use Department?
Nothing really to note right now, but ju- just to let everybody know, if anybody's interested, the planning board's going to be working on their zoning amendments, um, on their work session, which is the third Tuesday, which I believe is the fifteenth of August. So if there's anything that, um, you think that should be mentioned, um, just email me. Um, I know that I, I had a note about definition of shed, um, because I know we're, I can't remember where it came from, but I know it was one of the meetings, this is on one of my.
I say we all e- email her about the word, the word diminution, so.
Yes.
No, that's all.
And also, um, to note that the ZBA applications will be changing, um, and been working on it with legal. It's just to help it be, flow a little bit better for people that come in the office, so that way there'll be a separate application for variance application for, exception, et cetera, to hopefully make it more trend, not transparent, but easier for the applicant, as well as.
Yeah, we don't have anything in place for equitable waivers at this point, that was one of the big things we're trying to fix.
Okay, um, motion to adjourn? All those in favor, aye, anyone opposed? Oh, good. Thank you all.